I believe it was very interesting. There is actually a storm this year that was worse in Tustin than Calicoon. So that kind of like throws everybody because like that's snowing. I'm like, no, actually it's snowing a lot. And we have several students that come from this area. So I mean, it's just a vast area that I always appreciate. He always picks up the phone or text or whatever. So I'm really grateful for that during the winter. So, you know, I spoke here last year and it's always great to come back and say, here are the accomplishments that we were able to get to do. By having the support for last year's budget. First of all, we've been able to expand our career in technical education preparation programs through student attendance at O C's and also offering additional high school lectures. That are in the field where we're trying to expand career preparation. We have been able to purchase a school van through last year's budget will support this year's budget will support having a teacher be able to teach drivers education during the school day during the school year. So traditionally, we've been able to have a summer course. But by having it during the school day during the school year, obviously it affords all students. Driver's education, limited seats, you know, so it'll be seniority and birthdays probably driving that, but we're just happy to get it started. If this budget is passed. We also continue, continue to focus on our literacy. Last year we were expanding first. We had started like real small, like K one, two. Then last year we branch now pre K to third grade. And we're really seeing some success. We were able to have a, a external kind of literacy audit come in. And we're really ready to expand it all through all of our grade levels up to sixth grade. This year at the elementary school, again, using that science of reading, research and implementing those programs for our students. And of course, we continue to provide support for social, social emotional support for our students with mental health needs and actually all students at Sullivan West. We work with programs such as Miss Kendra in the elementary school and the ruler program K through 12, which really tries to teach students coping skills to help deal with the emotions that they're feeling and to also make sure they know those outlets. And how we can reach them through adults that are having a positive impact in their lives. Enrollment is always a big concern, considering the history of Sullivan West. I'm happy to report, we continue to have stable enrollment. We, a couple of years ago, did a 10 year outlook that said we were going to lose about 58 students over the course of 10 years. We really attributed that to three very large classes. Typically, Sullivan West classes have around between in the range of 70, low 70s, high 70s. But we do have one class of 96, one class of 89 and one class of 87. And so we expect that it's when those larger classes graduate that we'll see that enrollment drop. But honestly, this year's kindergarten came in at 80 students, so we felt really great about that. And our enrollment actually increased. Like, you know, the tiniest percentage, it was less than a percent, but so stability is what we're currently seeing. As far as our budget development, we have really take the priorities from our strategic plan. We did our strategic plan with Kini in 2022. We update it every summer. If anybody's interested in attending or participating in the process. You'll see information on our website in July. It's usually an August date that we get together and we review the priorities of the school. So we use that as a driving force for our budget decisions. And also the board of education develops like assumptions and parameters, which is a guiding documents. That has statements that include that we're going to recognize fiscal challenges being based by local taxpayers. We're preserving valuable programming and of course offerings based of difficult fiscal challenges. And that we're conscientiously addressing all safety and security needs. This was a year where we were, our budget planning was kind of thrown a little bit off course. Where the governor, every year has said, you're going to receive at least as much aid as you did last year. And this year she did not honor that in February, when she gave our runs, he had cut 2 million from us in that particular part of foundation aid. We had to plan all season for that to happen. He did restore it like three days before our board had to vote on it. So we did get that aid back. However, it came with, you know, it was seen as like a warning shot over the bow. We're going to come after that money potentially in the future. Right now they're going to do a study on the foundation aid formula so that they're going to look to see how that formula, which has been outdated since 2007, really needs to be overhauled. So keeping that in mind, even though we did get that aid restored, we really focused on being efficient for this coming school year. We really are looking at, first of all, least impact to students, but any, any places that we can reduce the attrition or just look at programming and just make sure that we're using every cent. And if there's anything to spare, kind of making a list or reducing when we can now to offset any potential cuts next year. That all being said, the nuts and bolts of it are that we are proposing at 2.99 increase the tax levy. This will put us in a strong position for next school year. And it is under the required cap. The cap was actually 3.05%. So we could have gone out to 3%, but we kept it a little over 3%, but we kept it at 2.99. Again, there was no, even though they restored the aid, there was no increase. So no year to year increase in our foundation aid. And, and we have continued rising costs as everybody does. Our health insurance went up 7%. Our B O C services went up almost 6%. Our employee, employment, retirement contributions, E R S is at 15% and T R S is at 10% for our contributions. And the biggest increase this year we saw was to our transportation. We had a contract that was awarded pre COVID. So we went out to bid this year and we knew that we were just going to see that rise. So we had been preparing for that. But it did count for over, I think, 1.3 million, a little bit more increase. So that was pretty significant. But again, we had been planning for some of that. And let's see, I do want to mention two projects that we do have going on. Again, really, we've been putting a focus on locally grown food and trying to get that to our school cafeteria. So last week is just one example where I met with the commissioner of agriculture, commissioner of ball. We've been working, working with Sullivan 180 and a single bite to through their grant opportunities and partnerships. How can we use like the local food hub to produce? What we need to be able to prep it in a way that it can be used on a cafeteria table. So we're very interested in continuing our farm table options or our farm to school options for our students to have healthy options in the cafeteria. And the second project is that at our Lake Huntington campus, we are looking at expanding. We have a space between our track and baseball fields. And we are going to be looking to fence that area off, put in hoop houses. We're starting raised garden beds to start kind of like an outdoor agricultural learning lab. We're looking to get our own C P E approval for all of our agricultural programming. And so the addition of this would help our student experience. We're also going to add chickens and anything else they might possibly let us have at a school. And we would like to increase signage, pathways, clean up our nature trail and actually allow more community access during the summer. So we're looking at, because we know when you're growing during the summer, really the harvest is going to come during the summer when everyone's bikinis turn into baseball bats because no one's blocking. So you know, we would have access where you could go in and maybe walk our nature trail or just come into the garden and pick and leave a small donation to our F F A. Our Future Farmers of America chapter. So I might come up to the town and speak more about that because we're going to look to apply for a larger community impact grant. Those are things going on at Sullivan West. You guys have any questions?
Quite a year.
Yeah, I'm busy.
Does the board have any questions at all?
I have one. What does B O C E stand for?
B O C is that's our local B O C program. So they kind of like are centralized. There's one B O C's in almost every county in New York state. And so we receive our specification, special programming through them. We have a part of a collective business office. So, so they can kind of group us together and get us better, you know, like if they take the central business office for all the schools and programming for all the schools because it's combined in into one, it gives us better rates on things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Stanford Bureau of Cooperative Educational Services.
Thank you.
Well said.
Yeah. Can you tell me what the seal of by literacy is?
Yeah. So our, so there are, she has come out with new seals that you would put on a diploma. So we have to already have the seal of civic readiness and we have a seal of by literacy. What this means is that any student, and we have several at Sullivan West that are in college French or Spanish, taking five years of a language. That they can do a capstone project, have to do presentations, kind of meet certain qualifications as well as having upper level courses. Having mastery of actually our English regions and our, our other language tests. And then they can earn that seal.
Which languages are taught?
We have French and Spanish at our school and we believe we can use a seal for both.
And how do you support student mental health need currently?
So we have, in the elementary school, we have a program that all students, at least once a week have like kind of a classroom lesson program called Miss Kendra where they might depending on age levels, I'm going to say, but I have a daughter in second grade and she will write letters to Miss Kendra. Or write letters to a family member or this about various topics in their lives. Some of it will be like, I appreciate you in my life. And it helps show the children, oh, look, you have this adult who you feel safe with. Oh, look, you have this adult that you go to. And then it shows the teacher and the counselors, wait a minute. They didn't, they couldn't come up with someone. So it's kind of interesting that it, you know, it helps us get a look at it if they're, you know, ensuring that there's someone the kids have. And promoting just overall coping skills. So we do our ruler program, which is at a Yale University. And so that is really focused on self-regulation. It's the idea that we're not always, there's, there's, we are at many times, many different emotions and it kind of has like a basic quadrant of, of positivity and energy. All right. So if you're highly positive and you're, you're really energized, you're like super happy and you know, and if you're, if you're energized and you're not feeling pleasant, you're like angry, you know, so it's just basic, but it's helping to say, what is that emotion? We're not always all happy. And you don't have to strive to always be happy, right? There's the intent with being at ease, there's being relaxed. So it's just really helping define it within and helping our students cope with that or give them strategies to the emotion that they'd like to be at for the situation that they're in. Maybe you do want a little amped up before you take a test to have some, you know, a good level of preparedness or alertness.
Is there a counselor on staff?
Yes, we have a social worker at the high school and at the elementary school. We have three guidance counselors at the one middle school, two high school counselors and two elementary counselors.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The vote is when?
That's the best. The eighth give backer.
Tuesday, May 21st.
Tuesday, May 21st, 12 to nine, and it'll be in the Tustin library.
Too important.
Yeah. Thank you.
Both softball.
Superintendent, would you like to go now? Okay. At this time, we're going to move to a second presentation from the National Park Service Superintendent. Karna along. I will let Cindy, I'll let you introduce everybody.
Actually, gotta go first.
Okay.
How you guys doing? Hello. I'm the Tustin U D C rep. I was, well, I know most of you guys, I don't recognize all the faces here. We're just here to kind of establish new connection with the town board and everybody on the U D C staff, Carrie and the superintendent and everyone that we work together with. We just want to let you guys know about different resources available within the U D C and what we kind of do. And obviously you can contact me with feedback. I have direct contact information with my email would be best at evansweetwater@gmail.com is my best email, but also we'll get contact through the U D C as well. So if you have any specific things that you want us to cover at these meetings, Kathleen has also been alternate, which is great because I've been really busy lately and hard to end all the meetings. So it's been awesome. How long have I served on the U D C? I think it's like eight years now. I didn't even realize it's been that long. But I'm the chairman of the Water Use Resource Management Committee right now. So I'm pretty busy with that as well. And we just, you know, cover basically a lot of stuff regarding the river and a ton of different topics. So if you're interested, all the meetings are public and open to the public and they're right across the street here. So it's easy for the Tustin town to, to attend. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot personally, but just so you have a face to the name. Let me know if you want me to represent anything in particular with the town. And I do my best to do the reports. Kathleen has been helping out as well with that. So I appreciate it. Thanks. Kathleen.
What is your name?
My name is Evan Pavoff. Did I not say that?
I'm Lindsay Kurnav. I'm the superintendent of the Upper Delaware Scenic and Recreation River. So as Evan just said, we are here with our partners from the Upper Delaware Council to just remind you why exactly the National Park Service is in your backyard and what we're doing and hopefully how we can help and serve you and the rest of the public throughout the corridor. So I already had the pleasure of meeting with Ben and Jane. They were some of my first visitors when I took this position about almost a year and a half ago. But for those who do need potentially a touch of a refresher, the National Park Service has been here since 1978. When the Upper Delaware was established and protected under, excuse me, was established as a unit of the National Park Service and protected under the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act. And every national park unit has a super snowflake quality of what makes us special. And for us here in the Upper Delaware, it's that we have a cooperative management mission that's written into the law where Congress established us. And it says that National Park Service, you have this responsibility in coordination with the Delaware River Basin Commission, the state of New York, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the 15, the, excuse me, the eight towns in New York and the seven townships in Pennsylvania. So we all come together. The Upper Delaware Council is the convening body that brings us all together. I'll let Carrie talk a little bit about what they do. But that is, that is why we are here and we're using this cooperative management model to protect the river and the 55,000 plus acres of the corridor. As most you probably know, it's mostly privately owned. The national federal government only owns 30 acres of that 55,574.5 acres. But we are in fact responsible for everything that's, that's going on within all of those acres, even if we don't own them. So we are here to, to work together to make sure that the river is being protected in accordance with what's called the Secretary of the Interior's Land and Water Use Guidelines for the Upper Delaware. So as I said, I'm coming up on a year and a half here prior to taking this position. I've been with the National Park Service since 2010, almost as long as Evan's been on the, or a little longer than Evan's been on the U D C. But so I started my career in Washington DC, working for kind of our headquarters level office. I've worked out at Mount Rainier National Park, Byron Island National Seashore down on Long Island. And now I'm here and I'm originally for Rochester, New York. So I've kind of been bouncing around and my parents are happy. I seem to be bouncing closer to home. So just wanted to talk a little bit. Part of the, we're calling this our road show. We're getting out and talking to all 15 municipalities that we work with, with the intent of just reconnecting with all of you in the public and making understand why we're here. Over the last five years, I'd say we've been in a bit of a rebuilding era between the pandemic disrupting all of our lives. We've had quite a few leadership changes. We've had quite a few people who were around very early in the eighties and nineties, joined the Upper Delaware staff and have since retired. So we've been working through a lot of institutional knowledge transition and transfer. So I might say we've been in some rebuilding years, but we're looking forward to being on stable ground now and really starting to move a few things forward. So I hope over the coming years, you see us focusing on what we call cooperative management. So there a ton of partners along our 73.4 miles of river and like any municipality out there, we're resource constrained just like you guys. So how do we make sure that we're investing with and working with those partners and organizations where we're really bringing the most mutual benefit. I also hope you see that we are focused in on what we're calling civic engagement and that one way we're doing that is making sure we're reconnecting with all our municipalities, our municipal partners. Making sure you understand what we're doing here and how hopefully we can help and support each other. And also make sure that we're providing our visitors and our local residents with the information they need within the corridor, particularly for anyone recreating on the river, local or not, to make sure that they're having a safe and enjoyable experience and want to continue protecting this river for all the generations to come. And I guess I also, as a superintendent, I'm kind of not that dissimilar from your last superintendent who just spoke. So I'm in charge of the strategic direction of the park, park unit as well as the day to day operations. So I think my operations run a little smaller than hers, but maybe more geography, more land covered, but anyway, so that's a little bit about me. I'm going to turn it over to Carrie to talk about the Upper Delaware Council and then Carly will wrap it up and talk about your packets.
I'm Carrie Engelhardt with the Upper Delaware Council. I am the Resources and Land Use Specialist. And I've been there since November of 2021. As Lindsay said, the council is made up of our 13 representatives from our 13 member municipalities and the state of New York and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the Delaware River Basin Commission is a non-voting member. And then the park service is our partner. The, I would say the bulk of my duties are involved in the project review. So any development or projects that are located within the river corridor that rise to the level of significant projects are reviewed by the council and it goes through our project review committee. And then to our full council, then the full council votes on whether to recommend to the park service, a determination of substantial conformance or not. That means that the project, most importantly, is of an appropriate use for the type of location in the corridor that we do. And then that it substantially conforms to the land and water use guidelines of a river management plan. And then we, the council makes their recommendation. And the park service makes a final determination. And if there are ever any questions involving that, you know, definitely come to me. I know Tustin is one of our most frequent, I guess, partner in we have these days. So that's great. And it's nice that we're right across the street. And another aspect of my job is also getting involved with events that kind of showcase the beauty of our river. Right this summer, I'm involved in the steering committee for the Delaware River Sojourn, which you may be familiar with. That's a week long paddling and camping excursion that starts in the Upper Delaware River and makes it way, makes its way down the entire river. This year we're camping for two nights at St. Gray before moving to the middle Delaware sections. And I'm also involved in the Upper Delaware Bio Blitz. That's an event that happens about every other year wherein a group of scientists descend on a site within the Upper Delaware. This year it's not in the river corridor. It's at the Highlights Foundation. And within 24 hours, they try to identify as many different species as possible. And there are different teams. There's mammals team and the reptile team. And the bug team and they kind of fungus team and they kind of compete by the most species. Bug team always wins. And I also wanted to mention a couple of programs that we have that luckily Tustin is aware of and takes advantage of. We have our technical assistance grants, which we offer every year. The applications is, it happens in August. And then it's awarded in October. I know currently you're working on your open space and recreation plan. And we were very happy, happy to support that. That's exactly what the grants are for. We have given out over $800,000 since 1988 in these types of grants. We also have river cleanup grants. These are awarded the first week of May. And these are, these grants are for cleanups that happen along the riverside as opposed to just out on the land. And this year we awarded grants to Deer Park and Highland. And I fortunately mentioned the Upper Delaware litter sweep. This was our four year this year and it was very successful. We had over 375 volunteers. I know the Nowarsburg beautification had a very large cleanup this year, I think at a few different sites. So we're very grateful for your participation there. And like I said, I'm always, you know, available for any questions or concerns. And now I will introduce Carly Marshall, the planner at the National Parks.
Hello, I'm Carly Marshall. I actually just started with Upper Delaware in December. Prior to that, I worked in municipal, municipal planning down at Gettysburg, planning zoning and code enforcement and was in county planning prior to that. And then did some private development of planning before that. So my role here is also to participate in substantial conformance review. And for those municipalities that are not members of the U D C, I perform that role. And, and I also want to kind of shout out to Carrie and I both have like previously served municipal government in different roles, but and are available as resources to all of you. If you have any projects you have questions about, if you have ordinances that you might be thinking about doing, we're both very happy to help and always available. In your packets, there are some sort of the fun stuff on the left hand side, things to do. On the right hand side, you have the U D C newsletter, park service activity report. We also have a new tool on our website. It's an interactive map that has the corridor boundaries along with parcel boundaries. And for the municipalities that have zoning, it also has zoning layers that you can turn on and off. So if people have any questions about whether they're property or project or something that they're considering is in the corridor, that is available to them. It's on our landowner resource page on the website. You get to that through the get involved tab. And I do have some quick instructions on how to use that in that packet, but I'm also available anytime anybody has any questions or if anybody needs, you know, I can even come and sit down and show people how to use it. And what else is in your packet? Oh, there's a one page handout, one of the municipalities that sister put together that just details the projects that would need to be reviewed for substantial conformance review. It's a front and back page kind of with a bullet point. But you also have a packet that I gave to staff that has the project workbook, the design guide, the river management plan, all the big bulky documents that are also available on both our and the U D C's website. And if you have any questions now, or even if you have follow up questions later, you are happy to.
It's on the website?
That is not on the website, but I can send it to anybody who.
I think maybe it's might be helpful for our, our work with our brand.
Yeah, absolutely. You can.
Yeah.
All of our contact information is in your package too. So feel free to contact us however you'd like to. And thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Carrie, have you guys thought about doing a presentation to like the planning boards at all? Just as like, this is what we can do for you. This is how we can help you because there's always, you know, everybody, I think everybody always thinks of, oh, geez, he's the code for the upper Delaware. You're about as loved as June is, you know? But it just seems like it'd be something that would be, I mean, I don't know. But it, it just seems like it'd be something that would be, I, I mean, I don't know.
About the road show, we are, you know, discussing whether to go to the planning board or the governing board.
I mean, it's. But yeah, you got a lot of towns.
Yeah. Planning board though, if you think that.
Well, I don't know. I don't, I'm not gonna step on the, the planning board's toes or the, the. Chairman of the planning board by any means, because he gets very grumpy. But it's just, there, there are a lot of resources that can make it easier, like that interactive map seems like it'd be a great thing.
Yeah.
Board have any questions? Concerns? Wants? Need?
What's your biggest concern about the river? For the next five years, what's, uh, what's your biggest worry? It, it, you know, whatever.
Wow. That's a nice thought. You know, when you, when you think about the rivers over the next five years, what's your, what keeps you up at night?
We continue to struggle with how, um. How best to help? Well, one, well, what keeps you up at night is keeping people safe, first and foremost, right? We have, um. We have one of the highest fatality rates of the national park units, especially on the East Coast. Um, due to drownings. So wear your life jacket. Friday is where your life jacket's a workday. You'd like, like, guys like to post a picture on social media like we will be. Um, but so, I mean, things that keep me up at night. Are that, um. Keeping our visitors safe. And then I think how we help people. Understand what's so special about this place and that we are a national park unit, but we are. A mostly private property. So both how do, how are we helping the private property owners within the corridor? Understand what that means, what, how that actually, in our opinion, unbiased, makes their property special and unique. And partners with the federal government. Um, and at the same time also helping, um. Bring visitors to the area to keep this area economically viable as it has been. And as this experiment over the last forty years has proven to be. How do we keep this economic end going and, and prove to everybody that you can have. Um, great economic benefits without the federal government owning the land. The private landowners can do this too. And everything is still working together and coalescing the way it's supposed to. So, um, you know, we still have issues with. Um, people trespassing on private property. And I think a lot of that comes from, how do we? I don't know that we're welcoming people to the area as effectively as we could, right? So that involved working with the E C, with P A Fish and Boat, a lot of different partners to, um. Figure out what we're doing as far as what we would call in, in our world visitor use management. Like, are we getting people the information they need, where they need it? Um, in a variety of different. So those are probably the two things that keep me up. I don't, you know.
Um, well, I would just say. Just in general, um. Development is probably inevitable. So the important part is to make sure that it's done responsibly and appropriately and in the right places. And, you know, that, obviously, that started with the comprehensive plan, that zoning, I mean, you know, it's a, um. They trickled out, but you know, a, a process like that, but I think.
I can add on that a little bit. It's just a big, we have an extremely healthy river here. As you know, it's crystal clear most of the time in the summer. Um, but as. A lot of rivers throughout Pennsylvania in particular have been, um, subject to increased sedimentation because of development that. Is unpermitted essentially, and it might be bulldozers, it might be, who knows what it is, but. Basically, the more sediment is the less. Room for fish eggs to be there, bug eggs, all these different things that create a filtration system for our river. So. Essentially, all the permitting that we oversee helps keep that sedimentation down, at least in our river corridor. Unfortunately, it doesn't really extend into a lot of the tributaries that leave in, lead into our river. And we do see a lot of sediment coming in from those, um, areas as well. So. Uh, just spreading knowledge about that is huge, I think. Um, there's a lot of big. Um, project, projects on tributaries that. You see lots of mud coming into the river and that really doesn't help the ecosystem, um, downstream. So. It's just more about like increasing education about development in waterways, because a lot of people, that's what keeps me up, is when I see. A lot of people ru- running tractors and things through creeks and, and then they don't really think about the, the, um, consequences downstream. But, so that's something that is, is very front in the, in the, the river corridor as well for the waterway.
We're, um, we're going to have the, uh. Our group to see any, uh, we're going to have some public lectures. Do you have people that can like the floor? Yeah. Yeah. And that's a great comment, yeah, putting it ahead of mine. That's really great. Okay, so we'll keep that, yeah, keep us in line, keep you online. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, yeah.
One point four is the payment of bills. The general account dispersed seventy-four thousand, one hundred and six dollars and seven cents, highway eighty-two thousand, six hundred and two dollars and five cents. Water twenty-six thousand, three hundred and five dollars and forty cents, sewer thirty. Two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, the lighting drift took nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fourteen. And the capital water six thousand, thirty-two fifty for a total of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-one cents. Um. Kevin and Bruce did the bills, any influence questions? A motion to pay the bills is presented.
I'll do that.
I've got a roach in a second.
I'll second it.
I have a second for the discussion. Fall in favor?
I.
I oppose. Uh, our division reports are posted online. For those that. Wish to see them, uh. Two point five, the Upper Delaware Council, the one thing that brought to attention, they would like noted at the meeting. Is that there's an organizing a food drive that will benefit the local food pantries until June the fourth, and the collection boxes. For non-perishable food will be at the U D C and throughout the town. That was submitted by Kathleen, uh, C A C, do you have anything to move through over?
I did, um. Which stands for Conservation Advisory Council, I just love that. So the committee did meet with M J Engineering via Zoom. And it was decided that the entire committee will meet every other month. And then just, uh, two representatives, uh, myself and Peter will meet with them via Zoom every. The other month, every other. Um. And then there are kind of two rep, at least two, maybe three weather permitting are coming down Thursday. And I'm going to give it to her and test and. Know that. That report. I don't think there's anything else.
Okay, any questions, Green? Kevin?
Oh, for water, two of the, I guess the two highlights are the, uh. Replacement of the shed and well to the subjects who. The, uh. What is surveys, we're gonna be talking about later. And then Jane, you spoke with Delaware Engineering about the delay, uh. You know, that it's been sitting at the Department of Health, but that's because they're reviewing the entire water plant, not just the water tower. Otherwise, it's all.
No real report for the building committee, we've started to. Get some quotes to bring to the board in the future. Regarding the water mediation and the heating and cooling down here. Uh, Jane, grants, anything we want to move over?
Yeah, well, I guess, um, it's pretty simple. The water project is the water project, um. The U D C, nothing at, not to report right away. And the, um, rec, outdoor space recreation plan I just told you about. But the, the new one is, um, in the process of submitting a T book, T mobile grant. For renovations of the town hall basement. And, um, I met with the building committee. And we came up with several ideas to. Put in for the grant, let's see if I can do it off the top of my head. One is for new splitter units, which would be more, um. Economical to use. Another one is to. Get the water, um, mediation for the, the. Records room. Another one is to work on. Renovate the kitchen so that it's, it's not such big space, but, uh, still usable. For us to have a green room, um, for the theater. We will take part in maybe, uh, one, two, three, four, is that it? I think that was.
No, is it?
Seems to be there's something splitter still related. So that's what's. They said that this T mobile grant, don't get excited, um, but it's like one in twenty, you know, order. But you have to try it, otherwise, you know.
Any questions for Jane, no notes? Uh, the Tuscan Youth has no updates at this time. Parks and Public Spaces.
Um, we had a very good meeting. Lots been accomplished since the last meeting. We've gotten, uh, the grasses trimmed in the generation, multi-generational park, uh, bleachers and trash cans have been painted. New trash equipment has been ordered, the mowing contract was awarded. Uh, we have had topsoil brought in and seeded thanks to the highway department and mulch has been brought in and distributed throughout the multi-generated park. Which will make it a lot more safe and pleasant for the playground equipment users. Uh, we have the first draft of maintenance and booking policies, which has been approved. We approved the dedication of the basketball court and are going to be looking into the signage for our next meeting, the.
Bruce Denny, Bruce Denny?
Bruce Denny, yes. And then. The multi-use court, we have approved the rules of conduct for that. And, um, we've reviewed signage, um, and we have a nice presentation from the beautification group. Uh, and their budget was approved and we talked about. Potential shade trees and shade structures depending on the final status of the pavilion. Which is still out to bid and we do not know the status of that because, uh, the information is being gathered. And we set some goals for a future talk, uh, and it says here that our next meeting is June third. It will actually be July second due to some scheduling issues and waiting for the pavilion bids to either come in or not. So our next meeting will be Monday, July second at five P M.
Not just a cancellation of the June meeting.
Basically, yes. And I see the people who have been, oh. Quite a few of the people who've been attending are either online or here, so I'm glad that they got the word out.
We have to announce that on, uh, then it's just a regular.
I thought it was the second apologies.
What, July first?
Yes, Monday, July first. Thank you for checking.
For the clerk's office, so just notice. Put notice that the June meeting is canceled.
And that's nine o'clock, right?
See, that's a five.
You have a picnic table topic that has been tabled, which I can. The first time I've ever seen that.
Um, uh, the, we are talking about the fact that the. Picnic tables that are currently in the multi-generational park. Are pretty weathered and I think a pretty healthy splinter opportunity for splinter groups. And, um, so we're looking at different kinds of tables. Depending on what happens with the pavilion and how much protection.
Did you order the tweezers to put down there?
I, we have, I, I, I personally donate.
Technically, the. The table topic has been tabled by the chair.
They got it in the. The transcript.
Can I ask a question?
I've got nothing on that.
Yeah. Not that as funny as Kevin, however, um, the, the maintenance and booking policies. Said it's been approved, the feedback has been given and it's been.
It'll have to come to the board now.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, just the committee approved it to move it forward.
And that is all in order, but again, it depends the, the level of needs depends on what happens with the pavilion.
Yeah.
So that will be contingent.
Any other questions? For Greg? I will open the floor starting here for public comments.
I'm representing two people.
You can represent as many as you want.
Um, my name is Sue Powell. Um, asking first for Iris, uh, she would like to know the status of the kitchen. When will it be cleaned out? Um. I thought she said there's some storage. Item that you bought or the town bought for, for, uh, Tuscan Youth. So when will that be cleaned out? Um. When will the renovation begin and is there an ending date?
So they've moved some stuff out of the kitchen already. There's more to be moved. There is no beginning date or end date at this point because. As you know, we have to get, first we have to get board approval for what we're going to do. Then we have to get quotes for what we're gonna do. So it's gonna be a process.
Okay.
Um, you, you know, we would like to see things like the Meals on Wheels come back in. Um, which will also mean we need to get the Department of Health back in to take, uh. Some tests and things, so.
Okay, thank you. And now I am Star Hess. Um, she kept me here tonight. Well, she asked me to read her letter. This is from Star. Uh. I don't know. Can't remember when she would bring up a topic. Did you then comment and then she went on?
Is this the one? Public comment issues for five fourteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Um.
I think the easiest thing would be, how about I just go through and give you an answer to what you've got in there.
Okay, um, she wanted it read so that the people online could hear it.
Okay.
Um.
So what she has written, it's a monthly review of various items that have been pending for the past eleven plus months submitted to the town council for their response. I ask that this document be appended to the May meeting minutes as well. One, the status of various town L E D and other inoperative streetlights. At the May seventh workshop meeting, Ben indicated that town clerk Crystal Weston called Nisek to repair the high sodium light by the Narrowsburg Firehouse. And at the New York State Electric and Gas Repair Truck spotted and working on streetlights by Huns Corners on State Route ninety-seven on five seven might have replaced. The high sodium light as well. Um. I don't recall saying that to her because. They wouldn't have been there.
She said that to you, as I.
Yeah. She asked that they. Ben said that NIPA replaced L E D lights for town streets and initial L E D lights for the parking lot at ninety-three main are scheduled to arrive for installation on May fifteen. That is correct. That's what I told her. Um, please confirm when and if this has been accomplished. We'll know after tomorrow, I guess. See the full list of inoperative lights for which the town is currently paying, the L E D light by Ras Musson's, the town deck still on twenty-four seven. Two main street L E D lights on either side of the railroad overpass, the Cobra Head Light at the corner of Grove and Erie Ave and a Nisek owned high sodium light on Bridge Street. Number two, will all projected costs of building a pavilion be included in the recently approved project estimate? Including this land survey, building plans and insurance and actual building contractor costs. All these costs be estimated before spending money on studies. And construction plans for a project that may not be feasible, affordable, or ever built at all. You know, we're waiting for the cost to come back on what the pavilion would be.
We're waiting for it.
Yeah, uh, the land survey, the survey has already been done. Um, and that needed to be done. Two parts, one, because we need a floodplain elevation certificate for the pavilion until we really need to know where our bounds are. And what we found out, it was surveyed back in twenty sixteen and they're going to forward that to us. Number three, the town should concentrate on providing funding relief to Darisburg Water Sewer District residents. By taking responsibility for paying the estimated seven million dollar project cost. For the New York State mandated repair of the town's ancient water and sewer infrastructure. Hey, this is not in New York State mandated repair. And the town cannot take responsibility for the paying of this seven million dollars because it is a special district. Both those have been told to start before, but. Apparently, if we ask enough times, it's going to. Happen.
Oh, okay.
Um, number four, why is a request for an ADA public toilet in town once again being ignored? The May seventh workshop meetings spoke of plans for two porta potty units to be placed virtually on top of each other, near the ballpark and playground on the flats. There was no mention of having even one ADA compliant public toilet available for people in the town hall, Bridge Street, Main Street area. Why two toilets within a stone's throw of each other and none available to people in downtown Narrowsburg, a much higher traffic area? Two separate areas. We're talking about porta potties for a. We're talking about porta potties for a park area and. I think I've said this once before, probably not the star though. There's probably at least thick public bathrooms in the business district. On Main Street between the Heron, the Tuscan Cup. Estalitas, the Delaware Valley Arts Alliance, the soon to open brewery and probably more than one that'll be in the Rasmusin building.
Are those all available to the public?
Anybody that wants to go in and buy a soda and utilize it.
They have to buy something.
Well, I don't know if they have to, but.
You don't have to buy anything at the D V A A. You can use the public, they have two public toilets.
And I would also say since we're talking about six different businesses, we may be looking at six different policies. So it's, it's, it would be impossible for us to say with due diligence, what all six.
Good point, okay, I'll, I'll write those, I mean.
But I think that's pretty much all of the comments we had said.
Okay, well.
You did a good job.
Multiple personalities.
Is there any other public comment from the floor? Yes.
I'd like to bring up, uh, my name is J P Mine. Long people look river down now at Burg, um. I'm representing a people rock running gun club. We own approximately two thousand acres in the town. And on the roads of, uh, Deep Hollow Road, Cusackton Turnpike and Malcon Road are dirt roads. We would like to, the town and ordinance that we, we have permission to drive A T Vs or U T Vs on those roads. I know other towns have allowed it. Um, I think that's the public hearing. I'm not exactly sure how this all works. But I, I'd like to suggest it to the town and we get the ball rolling.
That's something we can discuss with you at some point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with anything on A T Vs. I know there are. So you've got snowmobiles where you can.
Okay. We can do that, J P.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, other public comment from the floor?
Not nothing.
The largest one in the town?
Property wise, yes. Yeah. And that two thousand J P is probably, is that all in the town of Tuscan or Tuscan Highlands? Um. Split up between.
The whole of the town, um, the ones we're looking for, Town of Tuscan.
Yeah.
Uh, Deep Hollow.
No, 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 I meant the acreage of the club.
Oh, no, we own over three thousand acres. There's more like twenty-five hundred in Town of Tuscan.
Do I have anybody online? I see Anthony. Just trying to get shot.
I'm muted.
Can you hear me? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, I got a question for Greg. You, you mentioned earlier when we were talking about, uh, parks. That the maintenance and booking policies, it's done, it's, and you guys are okay with it now. When we say maintenance and booking policy, maintenance of the park, booking policies of the. Uh, not yet approved pavilion, is that what we're talking about, right?
That, that would be how I would describe the scope, Anthony.
Okay.
And that, um, they will go to final version. We, we can't go to final version until we know whether or not there's going to be a pavilion.
Right, okay, and that's, uh, I'm in agreement with you on that. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why it's not here.
Okay, no, no, and, but again, too, uh, I do remember when the. Very thick, uh, multiple page, uh, plan for the multi-generational park. Uh, became known to all the guys in the, uh, in the flats this past summer. Um, and when we had, you know, opposed that, that whole business and the way that it was set up. What we got back from, um, from, I, and I don't want to say this incorrectly, it was either from the board. Or from the folks that were running the parks committee at that time was that, uh, hey, we put a lot of work into this. So this is my question, Greg, are we putting to, oh, not we, because I'm not part of it, but are you putting? More work than you need to into booking policies for a pavilion that's. Not yet approved. And, uh, again, there's, there's a couple of steps before this thing. Actually becomes approved and when you start talking about things like that, that we have the booking policies for this new business in the park. It almost makes it sound like, or it gives the appearance that. This is going and I thought that, uh, we had talked about that at one of the previous meetings. Where it was, uh, the, the bids going out was to be a, uh, information finding type of thing. That's the way it went. So, uh, are we putting the horse before the cart?
We are doing due diligence so that we would understand the policies in the event that the pavilion was built. So that there is a context for any concerns that might come up. So when we talk about the policies. I personally did not draft the first version of those, so I can't say, but it was more to inform people of what the policy would be. And that indeed there was a plan because there were concerns that that had not been discussed.
All right, thank you, Greg.
Yep, thank you.
Anybody else online to your back? Okay, I'm gonna go back to the floor.
Hi, my name is Jay Neidick. Uh, I'm just wondering what the board's stand is on the, uh, faith-based. Affordable Housing Act that seems to be working its way through Albany right now. Uh, I did notice that there was a, a letter signed by a lot of the other, uh, local towns that didn't seem to be signed by customs. I'm just wondering where, where we stand.
That wasn't signed by Tuscan, because I did not bring it to the board when that was all done. It was in between our board meetings, um, at the work session, I think the board was supportive of the position that we are not in favor. Of it, uh, and the reason we're not in favor of it because it erodes the home rule that we have here in the state of New York.
Right, okay, great, so that's. Thank you for clarifying.
Never thought the lack of a signature would be so bad.
I mean, if I may go on, it is, it does seem like a kind of an important.
It is very important.
It's like ours.
It is very.
Yeah, and it might be something that.
And like we had a conversation at the work session, it just, it erodes all of the work that we do. Starting with our comprehensive plan.
Yeah, and it.
So, you know, a lo- a lot of work goes into, at least I feel a lot of work has gone in. To the town's planning by the board. You know, with our comprehensive plan, with our zoning updates, um. You know, and a lot of people are involved. It's not just this board, it's not just our zoning board, you know, there's, there's people that are involved with it at the county level. There's people that are involved with the U D C, the parks, you know, they all have the D E C, they all. Come in on this and so when it erodes something like that, it, it, it's just, it's not good. And.
I'm in total agreement.
Is the town sending a letter to Albany?
I mean, I, I could send a letter to Albany, um.
I think we should.
I would agree with that, yeah. I, I honestly don't know how far that, that particular proposal is going to go. It seems like it.
I don't think it's going to go very far.
But I do think it's important for towns like ours who would be really heavily impacted by something like that to, you know. Make sure they know in Albany that we're awake. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else on the floor? If not, I am going to move into old business. Um. We need to set a budget for some work upgrades, bringing in compliance, our dog shelter. Yeah, were you talking fifteen hundred dollars a year? Was that going to be enough to bring you into compliance?
Did I mention a number?
I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, no, I don't think I mentioned a number.
Okay. Now would be a good time to mention a number.
You mean for me to do the work or to have a contractor do it?
Either way. You know, I don't, I don't think it's fair for us to, to make you do the work unless there's compensation that goes with it, um. Or what kind of a budget do you need that we can do it? Yes, and that would be the scope to work.
I think it would go over fifteen hundred. I mean, I priced what the, the new panel boards, they're about forty eight, the four by eight. Uh, plastic even. Uh, so we were deemed about a half a dozen of those. If we want to do the whole thing right up from the floor to the ceiling. Uh, there's some demolition that has to be done, uh, some concrete repair. Uh, you know, just, there's a couple of potholes.
Okay.
Is this time sensitive?
That's weirdly.
I'm just saying, maybe we could revisit this next month with a, with a formal outline.
Yeah, that would be.
What I'd be, we know of a local guy? That swings a hammer like that?
I can't get the wall fixed outside.
Yeah.
You know, so do I have somebody that I can set up? No, the, the good thing is at least the price is low enough, under fifteen hundred dollars. That with our procurement policy, we can try to find somebody for that. Um, I think like Kevin says, let's, let's put together a list.
Put a real door and that, and a real door. The door alone might cost you.
Well, I, I've got an idea for your door because Don needs to change one at the highway department. So he's gonna be buying a door, we can take that used door and move it over.
Yeah.
Um, so that'll work. We'll come up with a real number over the next month. This way I can. You've got contractual expense, you got equipment expense, figure out which line we want to take it out of. Um, if you think it's gonna be fifteen hundred, then let's, let's put together a budget on it and get it taken care of for you.
Okay, I spoke to her, she called me recently. I told, uh, that it's a process.
Yep.
That's not gonna happen this month or maybe next month, you know.
She works for New York State, so she understands that.
Yeah, right, exactly, so. Uh, I feel we're okay.
Well, let's get it done.
Again, they're done right and come up with a number, maybe, I mean, I'm on. Couple of social media sites and I see handyman available. Uh, we would need them to be licensed and insured, I would imagine, right? Well, probably those guys would be out of the picture.
Let's come up with an idea, uh, a list of what you want done, a cost of the materials, and then we can worry about looking for somebody on it. Okay, I didn't know, we're gonna bring it up to the board. Do you have another question, Tom?
Are, are we talking about keeping the cage, the interior cage unit the same? About adding another cage, right?
I can't give you an answer on that yet, but I have only gotten one dog at a time. But, uh.
But we did talk about.
Chat with other A O Cs from other towns.
Yeah.
Me A C Os from other towns. Uh, they've had four dogs in a weekend. At last night's weekend, up in Liberty, you had four.
Well, we've got, if we end up with that, then we can.
I would say we need at least two.
Yeah, if, if we go past two in a day, then they.
The outside could be the third one, the outside of those two. You just gotta be careful when you open that door, that it doesn't run out on you. You know.
Then you're down to two.
I haven't had to put any dogs up there yet. Came close. Came close.
Okay, so we'll work on that.
Thanks to everybody sharing. We found that dog's owner. Plus, I got a lot of people on Facebook who, when I put it up, immediately saw Sharon in, so. Most dogs that we had owners were reunited with that pet within two hours.
Great.
We haven't had to use the hotel custody yet.
Do we have anything else for new business or old business? I'm sorry.
The contract.
Yeah, I looked at it, it, it's pretty typical of, of, of an engineering contract. The only, the only comment I would make then is if you look on the first page, it, it talks about their work product being their property. Which I get when they do design plans or engineering things, you know. Whether it's building design or sewer treatment plan or something like that. But the work product is, is, is a document that ultimately is planned that we're gonna use going forward, so I think. That might need to be clarified.
Okay.
Just, I say one more thing.
About that thing, man, Thursday, so I guess the last some.
Yeah, I just wanted.
And I would just get changed, just struck, actually.
Yeah, I, I think that language is, would be more appropriate and, and I get why that language would be in it if we have, we're having them design. You know, a building or structure or.
That might be just a format that they use.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably what it.
Yeah, we could come up with a number, but then, like, we want to leave it a working shelter right now, right? The number could change once we take those panels off the wall.
Yeah, that's understood.
And it exposes its ugly face with behind it.
Yeah.
You know?
That, that would be a contingent.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Um, any other old business? New business, five point one, the D V A A lease extension, this was done every year to extend the lease by one year. So that they're able to continue receiving funding. Um, discussion, any?
Same rate, right?
It is, and it does not interfere with the, uh, town if we wish to do something. Um, it. In the past, it was, if we wanted to sell the building, that would not be something that would hold us back on it. It's done as a funding issue.
So you need a motion?
I need a motion to extend the Delaware Valley Park Alliance by one year. I'll second it. I have a first, a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Uh, five point two, the Arts Alliance Thirty-Fourth Annual River Fest, Sunday, July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. They're requesting the road closure for that. Don't have the times in there. Sorry, we do a motion, uh, authorize any road closure for July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, the same hours as last year. Okay, I've got the motion, a second.
I will second that.
All in favor?
I oppose.
Uh, nobody wants to upset that. Uh, the Deepwater Literary Festival for June twenty-fourth, or twenty-first, twenty twenty-one for their road closure request.
Most times we're very limited.
Theirs was, yes, it was only a few hours in the evening.
Four to nine.
I believe it was, yes, uh, I'm just trying to get back in there, um.
From when would you approve that?
Late afternoon to early nine P M.
Quarter to nine.
Yes. Um, be careful of the post office.
Yes, that was the issue that year and that was, uh, that was addressed. They did it before the post office. They didn't do the whole, because of the. The postal cars need to still come in and out of the driveway. Um. Motion to approve Deepwater Literary Festival Friday, June twenty-first for the road closure request on Main Streets.
I'll move that.
I will second, uh, I have a second then, uh, for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, uh, five point four, we will take into town hall repairs, uh, for the water mediation, the main door, um. We'll get some quotes for that, um. We'll have to do that. As per the procurement policy, um. I would do a motion to. Approve fixing the main door for the town hall. Uh, as per the procurement policy.
Fixing or replacing?
Replacing.
We, so.
We have to replace it.
We have to, I'm sorry?
Because I understand that we have to.
We have to replace it, yeah, it's, it's.
Really fixing and replacing.
Yes, did I use the word? Wow, correct, yeah, I know, that'll be everywhere, I mean, that'll work. Um, well, we'll start with that one. I know the other two doors have an issue, but let's see how, how much that one comes in that. I've got a feeling it's gonna be. A motion to approve the main door replacement as per our procurement policy.
I'll move.
A second? A second, further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
I, I was worried about that one. It is the community.
Yeah, we know it's how.
Uh, landscaping of Little Lake Erie erosion control and aesthetics, did you have a?
Um, we were expecting someone, is anyone from the N B G here in place of the person we were expecting? I guess we'll have to postpone that till next month.
Okay.
Yeah, we, at very late, um. Tony sent a note about his concerns, uh, about that too, so. He had concerns that it would limit fishing and recreate. Tony Ritter.
Tony Ritter.
Uh, five point seven, Charles Woods Architect, I'm going work for the pavilion. Uh, we did have an additional bill come in for the amount of two thousand three hundred and seventy dollars to cover the. Change in work scope of that. And that was approved on the general bills. I would like to bring it back to the board to make sure that the members that were not. Part of the. Squad understood that that was in there. And that's for the changing work. We're good with that? I'm good with that. Yeah. Thank you. Uh, to be determined. Any other new business? Have we forgotten anything?
Five point six we covered in the introduction.
I'm sorry?
Five point six we covered in.
We did, yeah. And I thank them for staying for the whole meeting. Yeah, real, sometimes it can be very brutal. I am going to make a motion to move into an executive session. Before I do that, I'm going to reopen the public comment. For those people that do not wish to wait for us to come out of executive section, um, so that you can be heard before we leave.
More of a request than a comment.
Okay.
Uh, River Fest.
Okay.
I was hoping maybe we could set up a table. For animal control. For education, to educate people on our laws, with our flyers. What we could do for you, what you could do for us if you find a dog, how to go about contacting us.
So that you would have to get approval from the.
DVAA.
DVAA. If you're looking for the approval of the board to approach them so that you could do that.
How much do they charge for the table?
Yeah, I'm saying we're gonna pay the fifty dollars.
Right.
Yeah, that's all I would need is the town to pay the fifty dollars and maybe a banner.
I'm not saying I know that it's fifty dollars.
A banner that would go in front of the table? That we could use.
Ben usually don't have one.
We've got an equipment budget, so you would, but you, I don't think the board would have an issue with something like that. I would make a motion to authorize an animal control officer to. Grant permission to be with a tenant.
Yeah, and you know, part of the River Fest is the dogs on parade, so.
Well, that, that date, I think it's the twenty-second?
Twenty, it's time to check.
What is the date?
Maybe you, you might want to have a little guest spot at the dog parade if it can elude you.
Well, I was also was talking to Dr. Head about providing low-cost rabies and shipping. That can only be good for us, like, and more dogs shipped. And good for him because once he does that, people know that he exists.
Yeah.
And it could bring in business for him, so I spoke to him once already, but, you know, that was over the phone. And, uh, I don't know if we're allowed to do that right at the table, give rabies shots.
No, that would, I don't think that would take place during the festival.
No, that wouldn't. Be considered a part of the event.
Yes.
Yeah.
You're definitely welcome to.
You'd have too many dogs.
Yeah.
But I also asked them. To be at the table. This way if you go off a low cost, people could make appointments.
Okay, so I made a motion to authorize a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I.
I oppose. Um, is there other, other public comments? How about online? Okay. If there is not, I will make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose. Of potential acquisition and disposition of real property. That the correct one? I need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
I oppose. Folks, thank you for coming. I'm going to ask you all to actually. Bring your conversations outside so we can finish up and go home. Smells like, that's all. Down the road.
Such a rock. You never heard from.
Are we muted even though?
Yes.